Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 15th, 2025 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting in the Dare County Administrative Building in Manio, and the time is 5:00 PM. Before we begin, I request a moment of silence. I'd like to thank Commissioner Vurs for being here tonight. The Commissioners throughout Dare County is a very supportive program group with us, and we do appreciate their hard work and support. And Mr. Vurs, thank you for being here tonight. Next, if you will, would you want me to pledge? First order of business tonight is to administrate the oath of office to the students selected to serve as student advisors to the Dare County Board of Education 25-26 school year. Ms. Fallon, the Director of Secondary Education, will introduce the students and their guests. And Honorable Jermaine Gonzel, Assistant Clerk of Superior Court of Dare County, will administrate the oath. After the oath, we will have a little short recess for the students to have some pictures taken with their family.
Good evening. Oh, yep, mhm. Good evening. I'm really excited to be here this evening as we swear on our newest members, student advisors to the Board of Education. Really excited about the group that we have this year. We've already trained, and so they're ready to take their oath and start their work. So we're going to go in alphabetical order this evening and start with... Some of our students in the schools are joining us remotely. And so I'd like to start, if we could, with our Cape Hatteras schools, if they're ready to start. Okay, we're gonna skip that. And we're gonna go to our First Flight community, representing First Flight High School and our Northern Beaches. So, yep, yep, okay. So I'm gonna... Can you... Is it working? Okay. So I'm gonna first call up Jasmine Cook, a senior from First Flight High School, with her parents Shane and Liv Cook. Jasmine will take the oath, and then she will step over to the side to sign some paperwork. Is that correct? So as soon as you guys are sworn in, I want you to all kind of wait over here. We're gonna let you all sign away, okay? And remember, you don't sign anything that you don't read first. So Jasmine, if you'll come up with your parents, please.
Is this how we want them to stand? Hannah? Okay, there we go.
All right, if you want to read that.
I read it, I don't repeat it.
Yes, in case you...
Oh.
All right, raise your hand, right hand. Please repeat after me. "I, Jasmine Cook..."
"I, Jasmine Cook..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"That I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"...and love the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge..."
"...the duties of my office..."
"The duties of my office..."
"...as a student advisor..."
"As a student advisor..."
"...to the Dare County Board of Education..."
"To the Dare County Board of Education..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God."
Our next student advisor to the Board of Education this evening is Ms. Abby Miles, representing First Flight High School. Accompanying Abby this evening is her dad, Mr. Richard Miles, and her mother, Dr. Lynn Miles.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. "I, Abby Miles..."
"I, Abby Miles..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"That I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"...and laws of the United States..."
"And laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"...of my office..."
"Of my office..."
"...as a student advisor to the Dare County Board of Education..."
"As a student advisor to the Dare County Board of Education..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God."
Thank you. Ready? Okay. We're next gonna swear in some of our students, representing Manio High School and the Manio and Nags Head communities. So we'll start with Ms. Meredith Gaskell. And accompanying Meredith this evening is her father, Paul Gaskell, and her mother, Janelle Drake.
Repeat after me. "I, Meredith Gaskell..."
"I, Meredith Gaskell..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"That I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"...and laws of the United States..."
"And laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"...of my office as a student advisor..."
"Of my office as a student advisor..."
"...to the Dare County Board of Education..."
"To the Dare County Board of Education..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God."
Thank you. Actually, our next student is Ms. Marla Woodson, again, representing Manio High School. She's joined this evening by her parents, Linaya and Jimmy Woodson.
All right, please repeat after me. "I, Marla Woodson..."
"I, Marla Woodson..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"That I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"...and laws of the United States..."
"And laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"...of my office..."
"Of my office..."
"...as a student advisor to the Dare County Board of Education..."
"As a student advisor to the Dare County Board of Education..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God." Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And now I'm gonna reach out to our Hatteras folks who are joining us remotely. Because of the weather, our students couldn't be here this evening, but they are with their principal at Cape Hatteras Secondary School to be sworn in. So are you ready out there? How do I know?
Yes, we are.
Oh, yay, okay. All right, so we're gonna start with Elena Bonani. And joining Elena this evening are her parents, Jen and Scott Bonani.
Yep, stand right here so they can see.
Oh, okay. So left and hold up your right, there we go.
All right, please repeat after me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
"I, Elena Bonani..."
"I, Elena Bonani..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and maintain..."
"That I will support and maintain..."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"The Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"...of my office..."
"Of my office..."
"...as a student advisor..."
"As a student advisor..."
"...to the Dare County Board of Education..."
"To the Dare County Board of Education..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God."
Okay, all right, figure that out, okay. Thank you, Elena. We will figure out signatures later, so thank you, all right. All right, and our next student from Cape Hatteras is Estrella Olan Campos, who's joined by her mother, Fabiola Campos.
Okay, please repeat after me. "I, Estrella Olan Campos..."
"I, Estrella Olan Campos..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"That I will support and maintain the Constitution..."
"...and laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"...of my office..."
"Of my office..."
"...as a student advisor..."
"As a student advisor..."
"...to the Dare County Board of Education..."
"To the Dare County Board of Education..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God."
Thank you so much, and I hope for all the parents out there that are watching and those that are with us this evening, I hope that that's just your first opportunity to be sworn into public office. We hope to see you somewhere again, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon, Mr. Gaza, and congratulations to our student advisors. We're looking very fortunate of working with you this current year. At this time, we're gonna take a short recess so we can have some photos with the students and parents, please. We're opening the meeting back to order. I'd like to call the meeting back to order and request a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Bright. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Floyd. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Next, we'll turn the media over to Ms. Hitch for public comments.
No public comment anywhere tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bassnight, we'll turn it over to you for recognition.
For the district.
Thank you.
I have a couple tonight, so I thought I'd come down here. First of all, let me get this out so I say it correctly. The North Carolina Association for Career and Technical Education has named our own Dr. Shannon Castillo the 2425 Northeast Region Career and Technical Education Administrator of the Year. A little bit later in the meeting tonight, I'll be covering some of the statistical data on the Dare County Schools Career and Technical Education Program that she currently oversees. Shannon does an outstanding job of promoting CTE programs throughout our region and state. She bases her decisions on her biannual needs assessment and always attempts to tie our course offerings to local job opportunities. Here are just some of the local opportunities that she's brought to our students. STEM courses, computer programming, aviation construction, boat building, drone technology, a coffee shop, extremely expanding our student internships, and I can go on and on. But without further ado, it is my pleasure to recognize Dr. Shannon Castillo, the ACTE Career and Technical Education Administrator of the Year. Do you want to go ahead and do that?
Oh, can I get my...
Yeah. While she's up here, she has a presentation she would like to do as well.
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, members of the board, Superintendent Bassnight. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Mr. Darren Moore. Can we put him up on the TV? All right, there he is. Mr. Darren Moore, he has been nominated... Mr. Darren Moore, he has been nominated for the NCAT Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year. Colleagues describe Mr. Moore as someone who truly embodies everything you want in a CTE teacher, and his impact on students makes that clear. Mr. Moore goes above and beyond every day. He introduces new curriculum when students show interest, and he supports them through DECA competitions and other opportunities for growth. This year, he is teaching six different courses, ranging from marketing and entrepreneurship to apparel and textile production. Each of these courses provides students with the chance to earn valuable industry-recognized credentials, preparing them for success beyond high school. What makes Mr. Moore stand out even more is his personal connection with students. Many students sign up for his classes simply because of him. They know he genuinely cares about them. A great example of this, of his dedication, is when students ask to bring back apparel and textile production. Mr. Moore went out into the community, took sewing lessons himself, then came back to teach it. Today, he is even serving on the statewide committee to rewrite the curriculum for that course. Mr. Moore's commitment, innovation, and student-centered approach make him an outstanding representative of CTE. We are proud to support his nomination for Teacher of the Year. And if I could take a moment and introduce Dr. Brock Wambel and Ms. Karen McPherson. Brock Wambel is from NCAT, and Ms. McPherson is from DPI.
Dr. Wambel and Ms. McPherson have a plaque that they'll be presenting to Darren when we get across the bridge for CTE. One other thing I wanted to correct while I'm up here about CTE. Several times, I've said, "We don't build birdhouses anymore. We build boats, and airplanes, and buses, and tiny homes." I stand corrected. As one of the CTE teachers reminded me, we still build birdhouses. We just build birdhouses and boats and planes and tiny houses, so. Next, I'd like to ask Principal Kelly Flora to come up, please. Principal Kelly Flora has been named, has been in Derrick County Schools for the past six years, and at Nagshead Elementary School since 2022. In her time there, Kelly has partnered with her staff to lead a dramatic shift in the school's overall performance. Nagshead Elementary School made some major gains in this year's school performance evaluation. That was good. This Principal of the Year designation is voted on each year by the principals themselves in acknowledgement of the contributions being made by one of their own peers. We are extremely proud to recognize Ms. Kelly Flora as the 2526 Derrick County Schools Principal of the Year. We'll bring everybody up after this and get a photo in front of the board. Mr. Bruce Gimble, if you'll come up, please. I told him I wouldn't say too much.
I appreciate that.
Enough, enough. I am honored tonight to recognize this year's Derrick County School Teacher of the Year for 2526, Mr. Bruce Gimble. Mr. Gimble has been in education for the past 11 years and the last six in Derrick County Schools. Bruce is currently serving as a social studies teacher at First Flight Middle School, and because I know this firsthand, he is loved by his students. Mr. Gimble makes history come alive for his students, whether through active learning assignments or spirited class discussions. Every student is involved in his class. You should see him on the daze that he dresses in period costumes. I'd like to say congratulations to our 2526 Derrick County Schools Teacher of the Year, Mr. Bruce Gimble.
So how's that?
That was good.
I didn't do bad. And now I'd like to recognize our Director of Technology, Ms. Holly King.
Would you like to present it when it comes? Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we have the privilege of celebrating a significant professional achievement. We're recognizing Kimberly Dixon, a secondary instructional facilitator here in Derrick County Schools, for earning her ISTI certification for educators, an accomplishment that reflects not only her expertise, but also her dedication to innovation in teaching and learning. For those who may not be familiar, ISTI stands for the International Society for Technology and Education. ISTI is a globally-recognized organization that sets the standard for how technology can transform teaching and learning. Their work shapes digital learning practices, provides professional development, and creates frameworks that help educators prepare students for success in a connected world. The ISTI certification is not a simple badge or workshop. Instead, it is a rigorous, months-long process that challenges educators to demonstrate mastery in 25 ISTI standards. To earn this certification, participants must undergo intensive training, apply new strategies to real-world scenarios, and submit a comprehensive portfolio of evidence demonstrating how they integrate technology to foster creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, and digital citizenship. Only a select number of educators worldwide achieve this credential, and only the second in Derrick County Schools, and it represents a high level of professional distinction. By earning this certification, Kimberly Dixon has shown that she's not only committed to her professional growth, but also empowering students and her colleagues through meaningful, future-ready learning. Kimberly, on behalf of us, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're proud of your accomplishment and excited to see the impact you will continue to make. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we have everyone that we've recognized to come up, please, so we can get a photo? In case you didn't hear, as we just shared, the first teacher to get that recognition was Holly King. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Congratulations, everyone. I was getting her.
More recognition. Ms. Moore Newton, if you would come up, please.
Good. Yes, I want you to come up. Yes. It is my pleasure today to recognize Lori Douglas. Last year, Lori, a lifelong educator, proud mother of four Derrick County Schools graduates, and a retired school counselor, wrote and published a heartfelt children's book, "I Am a Superpower", in which she shared how bilingualism is a superpower. Her inspiration came not only from her professional background, but more recently from her personal journey as a grandmother. Her grandson is currently enrolled in Nagshead 3rd Grade DLI Dual Language Immersion Program. This experience has deepened her appreciation for the cognitive, cultural, and emotional benefits of speaking more than one language. In a beautiful gesture of generosity and encouragement, Lori gifted her book to her grandson's classmates and teachers. Her words serve not only as an educational message, but also as a powerful tool for building self-esteem and identity in young learners. In Lori's own words, "I have personally found great emotional and spiritual growth and well-being from various affirmation books as an adult, and I thought that children also need to hear the message that we are the creator of our own destiny." Her book is more than just a celebration of language. It is an invitation for children to believe in themselves, embrace their unique voices, and understand that their thoughts and beliefs shape their world. Lori's book is a meaningful affirmation of the value of bilingual education in Derrick County Schools. Through programs like our Dual Language Immersion, students are not only developing advanced communication skills and cognitive flexibility, they're also growing into global citizens. Learning more than one language opens doors to understanding different cultures, building empathy, and participating in a more connected and compassionate world. It helps children see through new perspectives and fosters respect for the rich diversity that exists, both within and beyond their own communities. Through her writing, Lori reminds us that it is never too early to teach children the value of self-love, positive self-talk, and the power of their own minds. Her work embodies the spirit of empowerment, education, and love. Thank you, Lori, for reminding us of the power of positive thoughts and the importance of positive self-talk. And here are a few students who want to share a bit of that legacy.
Hi, my name is Yaden. These are some things that I like about Spanish. You can talk to more people from different countries. It helps me talk to my dog. My dog is from Puerto Rico, and she listens better in Spanish. These are some words that are fun to say in Spanish.
Being bilingual means to me, being bilingual is a superpower because you can talk to people from other countries and translate for other people.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, now I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the floor? I'm sorry, it is not on my list. Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Good evening. I'm Jasmine Cook. I'll be reading some highlights on behalf of the northern part of Derrick County Schools. From Kitty Hawk Elementary School, our PBIS theme this year is Set Sail, Soar High: 100 Years of Learning at Kitty Hawk Elementary School. Our staff kicked off the year with music, smiles, and positive energy as families walked their children in on the first day of school, making it a joyful start to our sentimental year. At back-to-school night, parents filled the classrooms to hear about expectations and how we will stay connected throughout the year. We're excited to celebrate 100 years of learning at Kitty Hawk Elementary School with special events and memories to come. Our school community is ready to increase student learning as we set sail and soar high together. From First Flight Elementary School, the elementary school would like to extend special thanks to the avid students from First Flight High School who partnered with us on September 3rd, 4th, and 5th. These high school students came to First Flight Elementary to teach and train all of our K-5 students on how to use the new Open Gate Safety System that became officially in use on Monday, September 8th. Every student had the opportunity to practice going through the system with their support, which made the process smooth and positive. This collaboration not only built student confidence, but also demonstrated the strength of our school community when we worked together. We're excited about a full year of collaboration and growth. From First Flight Middle School, First Flight Middle had a terrific first couple of weeks. They have already held grade-level assemblies reminding students of the school-wide expectations to be kind, be respectful, be a leader, and be your best. Our theme this year is hashtag "It Matters". Staff spent time during the opening days brainstorming why middle school matters in a children's educational career and what First Flight Middle can do to make sure students are getting what they need to be successful students and humans. First Flight Middle had a rescheduled 6th grade orientation and open house on Thursday, September 11th, and they enjoyed seeing all of the families. Students toured their families through the building, introduced them to teachers, and shared what they have learned thus far. First Flight Middle also had their first Say Goodbye to Summer Dance on September 12th. At the high school where I'm a student, First Flight High School is a school of academic excellence, and our students have had an incredible start to the 2025-26 school year. In classrooms across the building, students are actively engaged, whether it's running hands-on science labs, presenting creative projects in English, or solving real-world math problems. Many of our students are challenging themselves by enrolling in AP and honors courses, and they are showing determination and pride in their learning. Our CTE program is thriving, with students creating practical skills, exploring career pathways, and preparing for certifications that will benefit them well beyond high school. Clubs and student organizations like HOSA are already hard at work, giving students the chance to lead, serve, and represent First Flight High School and our community. Students are also setting personal goals with the help of our counselors and supportive staff, ensuring that every nighthawk is on a clear path to success. At First Flight, our mission for students is to take flight, and our vision for them is to fly, be future-ready, lifelong learners, and in control of their future, and is being lived out every single day. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marla Woodson, and I will be going over the highlights from the Manio community. From Nagshead Elementary School, they kicked off the year off right. Students came back excited and ready to learn. Nagshead Elementary will host a back-to-school night on Thursday, September 11th. They will hold two sessions this year. The first session will start at 5:15, and the second will begin at 6:00 PM. We hope to see everyone there. This year at Nagshead Elementary, the focus will be on connection, connection with students, families, peers, and our community. We realize that we are stronger together. As always, go Wave Riders! From Manio Elementary School, they welcomed back all of the families with an exciting back-to-school bash and open house. It was great to see all of the families and stakeholders come, meet their teachers, gather for free school supplies, enjoy free food, and fellowship. Additionally, this summer, they established a behavior team and completely revised the behavior matrix. They now have RISE, which stands for Ready, Integrity, Safety, Everyone Matters, and they've been following up with positive behavior assemblies to encourage model and celebrate their behavior expectations throughout the building. They are absolutely thrilled about this upcoming year, and they are so thankful for the Board of Education approval for the new gym remodel, because that space has never looked so good. Thank you for all of the support. Manio Middle School had a wonderful start to the year. This summer, they had several major events. Ms. Gallup's STEM class worked with Mr. Bradley, who is a local boat builder, to build a skiff. The skiff was auctioned off this summer for $20,000. The class plans to bring another build this fall and another in the spring. and another in spring. Also, Mrs. Missy Jones received a $5,000 grant for her Cluck and Flow project with her Earth Environmental Class. Manio High School started the year off with an amazing first-day-of-school pep rally led by the amazing student government and welcomed our new assistant principal. We are looking forward to an amazing school year with lots of fun. We had a lights-out open house that was attended. Our students ran a successful club day. Lots of students are gaining knowledge across the board. Our CTE students are going to Be Pro, Be Proud Truck at COA. Our band received their new uniforms, and they are shining bright on Friday nights. Thank you.
So our highlights from our Cape Harris community will be presented remotely. I think it's Australia, if she's ready to present those highlights.
Hi, my name is Australia Olin Campus, and I will be presenting highlights for Dare Learning Academy, the Hatteras Schools, as well as Dare Early College. For the Dare Learning Academy, after graduating 25 students in June, Dare Learning Academy is happy to see our returning students and welcomes several new students for the 2025-26 school year. We have a total of 39 students spread between our three sites. Mr. Cox has jumped in with both feet as a long-term substitute for Ms. Sullivan at the First Flight High School Dare Learning Academy site. We had a staff at every site greeting parents and students at our open houses. We are very proud to announce that DLA surpassed each of our alternate accountability goals and met expected growth. It is such a great accomplishment. For Cape Hatteras Secondary School, it has been a fantastic start to the school year. Students have jumped right into the many learning opportunities in their classrooms and are already hard at work setting both academic and personal goals. Exciting things are also happening beyond the classroom. Casting for our fall musical, Newsies, is complete, and rehearsals are underway as our talented performers bring the story to life. CHSS marching band is preparing for various competitions in October. Our seniors kicked off their final year in style with a beautiful sunrise gathering at the beach, and then followed by a delicious breakfast, a memorable way to celebrate the beginning of their senior journey. We are so proud of the energy, focus, and enthusiasm our students are showing. Here's to keeping the momentum going all year long. At Cape Hatteras Elementary School, Cape Hatteras Elementary School is off to a wonderful start this year, and we have loved seeing our students return with excitement and energy. Each day, they are embracing our school motto: "Learning can take you anywhere. Find joy in the learning." Our open house was a huge success as families came together to connect with teachers and staff, complete registration, and explore our school passports. These passports gave families the chance to learn more about the wide variety of clubs and activities available to students, helping them find opportunities to grow and get involved. We are looking forward to our upcoming curriculum night on September 30th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. This event will allow families to engage with their child's learning and discover more about the programs and resources that support student success at Cape Hatteras Elementary. The first few weeks at Dare Early College have been full of energy, growth, and collaboration. Students work together to develop shared agreements that guide how to treat one another and build our school culture. They also provided thoughtful input to help shape our mission and vision statement, laying the foundation for who we are as a school community. On September 5th, each student completed their College of the Albemarle application, a huge step toward their future goals. We are proud of their focus, teamwork, and commitment to building something special together. It has been an exciting start, and we are looking forward to the months ahead. Thank you.
Students, thank you so much for the update. Very nice. Good job. Now we'll move over to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, can you clarify under number C, other, item two, where it says approval of nomination, of nominee for North Carolina School Board Association? Who is that?
Yes, sir. That is, that would be me. I put my, I would like to put my name in the hat due to the opportunity I had last year serving as a class and had a good representation at that conference working with Mr. Woodard and Ms. Ballance, and felt like that the board would like to see other opportunities from another vision of classwork.
So don't you think it should be a nomination before?
Based from my understanding, it could have been put on the consent agenda, so that's what we, you were on the consent agenda.
But nobody nominated you.
I nominated myself, which you can do that.
Yeah, you can.
Yep.
So if there's going to be discussion about it, it comes off the consent agenda? We can take it off the consent agenda, and we can move to amend the agenda, include that as an item under new business?
So we can do it next month.
So you'll need a motion to amend the agenda?
I need a motion to amend the agenda.
To remove that from the consent agenda and add it as new business?
Mr. Chairman, I have a move that we amend the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor, remember, Ms. Brown?
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. We amend the agenda.
David, you now need a motion.
Now we need a motion to approve.
To amend your consent, or amend your agenda to include that as a new business item.
Business item.
Mr. Chairman, I move to move this item to the agenda.
New business.
New business agenda. A motion by Mr. Bright, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries. Now with being said, now do I have the approval to approve the consent agenda?
As amended.
As amended.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
A motion by Mr. Payne.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brower. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries. Next report of information is the first report from Ms. Kelly Flock regarding the Everyone Playground.
I should realize, does that come off your hand? Tied my pants, so that's probably not a great way to start the presentation.
You look great.
I'm Kelly Flock, and I am a physician assistant with Servp Pediatrics in the community and also a parent of a Dare County student with cerebral palsy. And we're here with some of our other committee members to go through a presentation to the board to talk about the Everyone's Playground project. Some of you are already aware of this project, but this will provide a little bit of a synopsis. This presentation, if I understand correctly, will be available to you guys afterwards as well if you want to look at it more fully. And I don't know how to use this, but I'm going to try. Our committee members are listed here. It's Scott Brown, Jane Webster, Sarah Spencer, Marie Nielsen, myself, Amy Doherty, and also Macy Shava, and we've had great guidance and supportive test judge as well. Just to go through the story of this, this started as a project in 2018, 2019, prior to COVID, due to my daughter and another friend starting kindergarten and wanting to play together on the playground and not being able to due to accessibility. And so initially, it started just to make a means to an end, so students would be able to gather and play together. We are thrilled and grateful and humbled to be where we are now because we are getting really close to our goal to do not only that, but to build a very fully accessible, fully universal play space that is not only going to be for students, but will be for community members as well, and not just those with disabilities, but also for an aging population, grandparents who are raising grandchildren in our county. We are going to watch a video that Dare County Schools graciously made for us to help raise awareness of this project a few years back that I don't know how to click on, but maybe they can help.
At Kitty Hawk Elementary School, we're working hard to provide a fully inclusive environment for our students inside and outside of the schools. We want to include students with limited verbal abilities. We have a communication board. We have a sign language club to expose children to that language so that they can communicate with different children with hearing impairments. And we hold Cultural Fridays to expose students on a regular basis to many different types of people. This playground is just part of the puzzle that is Kitty Hawk Elementary School. We want to provide the students and the community with a playground that has no barriers for children of different abilities, and they can play together. My daughter Penny, when she was in kindergarten, and Nola was also in kindergarten, came home saying that she couldn't play with Nola on the playground, that the woodchips were making it so that her wheelchair at the time, and then now her walker. So I came to Kelly and just kind of let her know what was going on. It was heartbreaking because we had talked about our girls being in kindergarten together and being able to play, and within the first weeks, we realized there was a huge barrier to them being able to play that shouldn't be there. And so we brainstormed and came up with, why has no one else thought about this? There should be a way that children play together. There should never be a barrier. Never be a barrier. Play together. And so we started the project.
Well, like, she can't do monkey bars or go on ladders or any of that stuff. She can't really swing. If I couldn't do that stuff, I wouldn't be that happy.
It's kind of been difficult for them to kind of get around on the playground because it's not really built for walkers and wheelchairs because there's like stairs, but it'll be better to have one if there's like a ramp so then everyone can get up it.
I like the idea that I can move around easily instead of walking on woodchips. I have a bad knee right now. And I can be with my granddaughter, who has some disabilities, and she can enjoy the park just like all the other kids that come here.
So the playground that we are creating is going to be an inclusive surface for everyone, meaning that we have a rubber matting on the ground so that we don't have to worry about the mulch issues. And then we also have a lot of ramps, a lot of places where kids can kind of climb and hang out on lower levels and just like an inclusive place for everybody. A lot of times when play areas or just community areas are built, corners are cut, you know? Costs are high, and so people do things not thinking about whether it will be accessible to someone who might be mobility-challenged or cognitively challenged. And so we really looked at a number of different things. We researched, how can we make ramps easier? A ramp is not just a ramp. We need a low-grade ramp. We need a wide ramp. We need entrances to the playground that are wide enough for people in wheelchairs or walkers to get through. We need pieces of equipment that are low enough that people can get to them. And not just our children, but our grandparents that are now taking care of their children, children in strollers. Parents need to be able to push them. And so this is not just a vision for one kid or one type of kid. This is a vision that will include everybody. While this playground endeavor is very expensive, we are proud to continue to make steps towards reaching our goal every day. Early adopters of this, early sponsors, include families, churches, our Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, our schools, our community foundation. And we're continuing to work towards that goal every day and increasing our support to make this playground a reality. These kids are going to play together organically and not be so afraid of differences, not just on the playground, but it's going to translate off the playground as well as they get older and in the classroom and in the school and in the workplace. And that's something that we're really excited about with this project. We hope that this playground inspires other schools and other communities to build similar playgrounds so that someday, this is not the exception, but fully inclusive, fully surfaced, and ramped playgrounds are the norm.
So obviously, as you can see from that video, we kind of outlined the project, and hopefully that's helpful. It's probably the best impact just to see in general. The cost is mentioned in there, and it is not a small cost by any means. But again, we are pretty thrilled to be where we're at right now. The, both playgrounds at Kitty Hawk Elementary School are included in this plan, the center playground, which is for the younger students, and then the larger playground up front. The center space is a cost of about $370,000, and the front space is a cost of about $534,000. These costs have changed as we started this project quite some time ago. Unfortunately, costs have gone up. But we are making huge strides towards that. To give you a little bit more information on our progress, I'm going to let Scott Brown speak a little bit about where we are as far as fundraising goes.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. I think I was walking around the Kitty Hawk Elementary Fall Carnival about a year and a half ago, and somebody stuck a flyer in my hand about this project. And I thought, well, this looks fun. I can get behind this. So I went home. It was close to the end of the year, and I sat at the kitchen table to strike out a check for that and some other causes that I believed in. And for no particular reason, I was going to strike a check for 500 bucks. And then I just thought for a second, you know, if they need to raise $10,000, this actually helps. If they need to raise $1 million, this isn't a drop in the bucket. And so I sent an email, and I said, you know, I've had a little experience with fundraising. I happened to be board chair of the Outer Banks Community Foundation during Hurricane Dorian, where this community just marshaled so much support and resources in support of Ocre Coke. And then served at the Outer Banks Relief Foundation and chaired a $1 million capital campaign. So I said, you know, Kelly, I don't know if any of that experience would be helpful, but I'm happy just to have a meeting with you, right? Guess what happened? Just a meeting, just a cup of coffee. And so I met with Kelly and Macy and made no promises. I was about 30 minutes in before I realized I was completely cooked and captured by this project and just so impressed by their determination, right? I mean, what more can you want of a citizen, a mom, a parent, to see a problem, to see a challenge, and to turn it into an opportunity that winds up benefiting hundreds, potentially even thousands of people? So I came on board and said, hey, we need to form a team to go out and raise money. They had done an awesome job pursuing grants. I said, I think we're going to have to embark on the uncomfortable reality of asking individuals in our community for substantial donations. And so that's what we've started to do. And tonight, I am just honored and humbled to share with you yet again how awesome Dare County is, the number of people that have stepped up, whether it's individuals or businesses, whether it's grandparents or elementary school students sharing the proceeds of lemonade stands, nonprofits, the Outer Banks Community Foundation, the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, the Meekins Trust, Outer Banks Health. This summer jumped on board with a $50,000 commitment. Their president, Ronnie Sloan, has taken a personal interest in the project and asked to be an unofficial member of our team, which we gladly allowed him to do. They in turn said, hey, we've got some donors that we think would be interested in this project, connected us with them, and they in turn have donated. So person after person, this has really become a broad-based initiative that is benefiting from that wonderful Dare County support. So at present, we are standing right now at $715,000 raised, which is awesome. And it would not have happened without this lady right here, who also deserves a round of applause. So we've got just a little bit more work to do. We've got meetings lined up. If you see me on the street corner with my ball cap out asking for donations, that's why. But we hope to be back in front of you very soon asking for your final approval of this project. We need to get this order placed by October 31st to have it installed this summer. And so just really want to thank the Dare County Schools administration. They've been working with us hand in hand on numerous logistics, not the least of which is where are we going to store this equipment while we're waiting for it to be installed? Because it's a little too big to fit in my garage and Kelly's garage. So anyway, we thank you all very much, and we're just delighted with our progress. So anything else?
Just to further expand too, on the October 31st, the reasoning for that is the playground company that we're working with, who has been wonderful. They actually have an amazing grant that is a 50% or 100% match, basically. So we get a 50% discount on large portions of the equipment. Unfortunately, not the port and place surfacing, which is quite a cost, but the equipment in and of itself. So if we are able to place that order by October 31st, we're seeing a savings of $100,000 to $200,000, depending on where we're at. So that's why the urgency as far as... And we'd like to be done with this because it's been a long time coming, and I'm tired. So Scott, he got roped in, says Macy. Are there any questions that we can help answer or?
Where can somebody find information? And some sort of a link where they could give to this?
Absolutely. So we have a website, which I believe is listed in the video. And it is at the end of this as well that gives you all of the information. And then there's a link directly from that website to the Outer Banks, our fund at the Outer Banks Community Foundation is probably the easiest way. On that website is also emails and mailing addresses if you prefer to do that. And we're always happy to speak about donations.
Happy to accept checks right now.
Also, yes, yes. I mean, if anybody is feeling inclined. But yeah, all of that is on the website.
This is very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know either of you, but I know her.
Yeah, she deserves a round of applause.
If you are anything like her, you'll be back very soon to show us what you've finished.
Yeah.
So the determination in that one is unmatched.
Scary.
Unless it's matched by you two, but then we got something. But anyway, it is very impressive.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions from any board member? Ms. Kelly?
David, I would like to say something. Just, first of all, beautiful presentation. But what touched me was your advocating for everyone, not just your child, but for children across Dare County and grandparents.
Well, and I will say, my child will not be at this school once this is built. Thankfully, we live close by. We're going to visit. I'm probably going to erect a tent there and live there for a while with your approval. But so it really truly is, it started as an initiative because of what I saw with my own child, but this is going beyond that for sure.
Well, I think that's very precious.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. We do appreciate it. Scott, thank you. Next, I'll turn over to Mr. Bassnight for the next upcoming two reports.
Good evening. Those of you that are wearing ties, you might want to loosen your ties and recline your chairs and sit back. Because I've been waiting to do this. And there's a lot of it. So I'm just going to go ahead and give it to you upfront. Sit back and enjoy it. There's a lot of good information in here. And we have, staff and I have tried to cover everything to give you the best picture of Dare County schools and the state of our schools tonight. So I hope you enjoy this as much as I do. Let me go ahead and tell you, it's pretty good. It really is. And I think you're going to enjoy this. Want to start off with our goals. We have them on our banner up here. You know what those goals are. Everything we're doing, we're trying to fit under these headings. Our new mission statement, increase student learning. Straightforward, simple. Now, in using data, we have two goals. Dare County is committed to using data in a purposeful, specific, and targeted manner through thoughtful analysis and effective application to guide the decisions that support and strengthen the success of both students and staff. And two, Dare County schools will be recognized as a leader in student learning and doing across our state for providing options and opportunities for our students and staff to learn and grow. Folks, we are well on the way. Want to start off with something because I've heard a lot about this lately. Those are our enrollment numbers. And I know this says 2015 to 25, but actually, I went back to 1997. These are our student enrollment numbers. You can follow the little teal line since 1997. And you can see the increase in student enrollment. But over the past three to four years since 2022, you can also see that line coming down. That's hugely significant to what we're getting ready to talk about here. Let's look at it closer. Let's look at 2015 to 2026, to our current school year. And the last column, the 4790, is current school year. ADM is funding, okay? Roughly, what we're talking about is about $15,200 per student. And if you look at the difference in the 21, 22, 22, 23 school year to current, that's about a reduction in funding of about $5.7 million. Our funding formula from the county has an ADM factor in it. Our funding formula from the state has an ADM factor in that. Last year, our... Excuse me. Sorry. Some of the folks at the... Average daily membership. Sorry. ADM, average daily membership. Last year, the state changed the way they funded. They used to fund us for the upcoming year based on last year's ADM, average daily membership. They currently, after last year, changed to, they will fund us on our funding last year, and at the end of the year, they will cover any differences in that funding or they fund in arrears. So basically, you go through a school year, and then if you had more kids than they anticipated, they'll give you the money after it's all over with, which really changes how funding takes place in schools. But what I want to stress to you not only is is that $5.7 million reduction because of the loss of ADM changed what we did. It also reduces the number of teachers that you get from the state, which is also based on your average daily membership. So we're not only, the population is not only going down. We're also losing... Just because you have a teacher doesn't mean you keep a teaching position indefinitely. That is based on the number of students you have. So we have to look at not getting rid of teachers, but anytime somebody retires or leaves the position, we have to look at that position from the standpoint of, do we still have the ADM at that grade level or in that subject to support rehiring that position? And if so, then we advertise the position. If not, then we need to look at larger class sizes and things that happen in schools on a daily basis. So just note, every time a position currently comes open, we are looking at that position based on ADM, based on enrollment, as to whether or not we need to fill that immediately or do we look at filling another position? It's just being responsible. Bad news is this. Several years ago, when the ESAR money came from the federal government, we were flooded during the pandemic with all this extra money. That allowed you to hire or cover positions. And if you go back to, you know, 2019, 20, 5296, 5320 in ADM population, that's a lot of positions. That's positions that were funded based on ADM and based on the money that we got from ESAR. But since that, since the pandemic, that money only lasted for three additional years. And so when that money ran out, there is no more. You can't keep spending that money over and over again. So over the last three years, we've been looking at our positions as to, is that a position we're going to need to continue? If so, we need to find the funding. If not, we need to look at how we're going to replace that position or cover that need in that class. Now, certain classes, particularly lower elementary school grades, are required levels of enrollment for those grades. K-2, you have certain numbers that classes can't get higher than those numbers. If you have a class of 19, let's say 20 students, and you get to 21 students in that class, if you have one more student enroll in your district, you have two choices. You can apply for a waiver from the state. You can do that at that school one time every two years. After you've applied for a waiver that one time, you have one choice left. You have to start a new class, which means you have to hire a teacher, which means you divide a class, okay? It's not optional. Now, that's K-2. After that, you don't have those class size requirements that you have to deal with. But some things are non-negotiable. So when you reach those benchmarks, you really have no further choice. ADM affects everything. Now, let's complicate it even more. We have ADM going down, which means we have funding going down. But we have costs for everything we're doing going up. So we have to meet the need of the students, provide for the finances to cover those costs, but also stay within our budget. That's the juggle. Vacant positions. As of August 25th, we have 14 certified positions that were unfilled and six classified positions. Now, let me say this. That doesn't mean we're going to fill all those positions. And as you can see, over the last three years, we literally have been looking at every vacant position as to whether or not that had to be filled immediately or at all. Cohort graduation rates across the board. I think the state average went up to 87. We're at 93.1%. And I've coded the current year's data is going to be pink in all these charts, so it stands out to you just so you know the difference in those. We did see a slight drop in our cohort graduation rate. When you have three high schools and one of the high schools drops slightly, it's going to affect your numbers. And that's, our rate dropped from 94.5 to 93.1, substantially ahead of the state. Dare County Schools highlights. Okay, each year, I provide you a slide that shows areas that we really want to focus on or areas that we see as a definite challenge. And I did this for you last year as well. And I want to show you the list of areas of focus and areas of challenge that we gave you last year and the difference this year. If you see all of those green numbers with plus signs beside them, those are all numbers that went up in the areas that we identified last year for you as areas of focus or areas of challenge. From fourth grade to Math 1, we have three numbers that dropped. Seventh grade reading dropped 4/10 of a point. Eighth grade, I'm sorry, eighth grade science dropped 6.5 points. That was a new test this year. The whole state dropped in science, but we didn't drop in all of our science classes. So we felt good about that. And our Math 1 went down 6.2. But I want you to keep that in mind because when we get to Math 1, I want you to look at the impact that we're actually having, even though that number may have dropped. As you can see, Math 1 in the state actually dropped 2.5 points as well. So the majority of areas that we identified as areas of focus or challenge last year increased student performance this year. Since 2017, we posted the highest eighth grade English Language Arts performance proficiency score. Our Math 3 actually increased from the highest last year this year. And the number of CTE credentials for the third year in a row set a record. Our ACT composite scores. Two years ago, the state changed the composite number from 17, being the minimum UNC requirement for admission, to 19. As you can see, last year, all three of our high schools exceeded 19. The state backed off of that this year, and they've actually lowered the minimum requirement back down to 17. And so our high school average for our district is 18.9. So we exceed the minimum requirement for the UNC system schools. Again, impressive, y'all. There's not a lot of districts that can do that. And I'll reiterate this too. What you're looking at here in this data are district averages. Keep in mind, we have schools that are going to be doing better than these averages in schools that aren't going to be up to these averages. So just, the schools get their data for each individual school supplied to them so they can use that in their planning. These are our school performance grades for this year. We have five schools that received a B grade. But I want to stress something. Look to the right of those grades. Of those five schools, three of those schools increased their school performance grade under the B category. Under the C category, we had five schools that received a C grade. Of those five schools, Cape Otters Elementary actually scored the exact same score they had last year. But every other one of those schools increased their school performance grade and substantially. One or two points is not bad. But when you're increasing school performance grades by six, seven, eight points, that's pretty impressive because that's your overall score. And then finally, we have one school that received a D grade, and that's Manny Elementary School. Although Manny Elementary School also increased their overall school performance grade this year and are within two points currently of coming out of low-performing status. And I'll talk to that in a little more detail in just a few minutes. 73% of our schools increased their overall school proficiency grades. 73% of our schools increased their overall growth scores. And growth is tremendous, y'all. Growth is extremely important. I tell our people all the time, you can make proficiency and not make growth, and ultimately, you're falling behind. What growth means is growth means from day one of a school year to the last day of a school year, each student is receiving one year's worth of educational growth. And when you meet growth, that means what you're doing. You're doing exactly that. Your students are meeting one year's worth of learning. If you exceed growth, you're going beyond that. If you meet and exceed growth, over time, you'll make proficiency. So it's extremely important that kids grow each year one year's worth of learning, or you're falling behind. And 3/4 of our schools this year increased their growth scores significantly. Look at that. That was our growth score last year. If you remember, I stood here in front of you last year and told you I felt like we had a drop because the rest of the state caught up with us. And we went from 87 to 64. We went from 64 to 83. That's huge. And when you look at our overall growth numbers, and again, you've got screens in front of you. I don't know if the people that are watching online can see this or not. But there's a positive 2 and a negative 2 on this chart, above and below zero. That's considered meeting growth. Statistically, if you fall within that negative 2 to positive 2, you're considered meeting growth. If you exceed positive 2, then you're exceeding growth. That means every student is either meeting the amount of learning they need to in a year or they're exceeding that learning. And overall, our district score is 3/10 of a statistical point from exceeding growth. And you can see, we made a significant increase over last year's. 91% of our schools met or exceeded growth. Let me say that again. 91% of our schools met or exceeded growth. 91% of our schools are getting kids one year's worth of learning. You do that consistently, you're going to be fine. Elementary schools. Again, these are averages. There are several things I'll point out as I go through here, things that are good, things that are bad. But I've got a, instead of doing this for each slide, I've sort of got a slide that's going to do this for you. Third grade reading. We actually were below the state average by 4/10 of a point in third grade reading. But what is really interesting about this is every district that I've talked to dropped. And no one has... And no one has, we've asked DPI. No one can explain what happened to these scores. Now, I will go back. I know Paul's back there and I'm not going to beat this, this horse to death. But if you remember when we started testing this year, the entire testing system in the state of North Carolina shut down the first day of testing. Third grade is the first time that our students are participating in high stakes testing at the state level. EOGs in the grade tests. I've got to think that the first time a third grader sat down to take that test and the test shut down on them may have had some effect on their performance on that test. How much statistically, I can't tell you that. But we're asking that question of the state and they're willing to look at it. But we've got, there, there's, there are several things that just don't make a lot of sense in this. And again, we'll look at some of those as a group in just a minute. Do you have a question? Okay. Fourth grade reading. Again, we were five tenths of a point below the state average in fourth grade reading. Fifth grade reading, we exceeded the state and made a significant jump over last year's 49% to 56%. Math, grade three, again, grade three, below the state average. We're digging every corner we can to figure out what's going on in that. And we have a plan to address it. Fourth grade exceeding the state average and increase over last year. And fifth grade exceeding the state average and increase over last year. Science, this year was a brand new science test. All science assessments for end, end of grade and end of course, including biology, were new tests. Typically, there's an implementation drop when you roll out a new test at the state level. We actually went up in fifth grade times. And I've had superintendents call me and go, what are y'all doing? Science killed us. So that was, and as you can see, the state average dropped four, four points this year too. And again, you would expect that with a new test. Elementary, high, elementary proficiency numbers. What I've done here is I've given you, I've painted a picture and I, I hope you didn't get too much of this, that elementary is a little bit down. But y'all, I'm telling you right now, our bar is set high. So when I say elementary is a little down, look at these numbers. On the left is the number, it's our rank out of 115 districts in the state. On the right is where we fall in the percentile. So for third grade reading, even though it was down, we're 37th in the state in the top 32%, the top third of the state. Third grade math is, we're 71st, we're in the top 62%, and we're working on that. Fourth grade reading, we're number 43, top 37. Fourth grade math, number 37, top 32. Grade five reading, we're number 23 in the state. We're in the top 20% of the state. And, and in math, we're number 32 and 28%. And that brand new science test, we're number 21 in the state in the top 18%. So again, even though by our standards, these numbers are not what I would want them to be. We, we've got a high bar and we want that bar set high because we're going to meet it. Yes, sir.
Question. On the previous slide, the percentage that we're looking at there as far as proficient, that's grade level proficiency?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Fifth grade, grade level proficiency. Okay. Any other questions? All right. In comparison, these are our schools in our region. The 24, 25 school year is over here on the right. I told you last year, there was a, a, a school district in our region that, that I wanted to know, we were coming after you. I actually had someone come up to me the other day and that district had come to one of our employees and said, y'all need to back off in Dare County because you're getting too close. If you look at the right-hand column, notice the drop in the first blue line in the right-hand column? And our scores are going up. We're going to compete and we're going to take over in the region as the, the predominant school system because we're putting place, things in place to do just that. And we're making those strides. So one of our schools, Manny Elementary, was low performing. I wanted you to know that we already have plans in place to address that low performing status for Manny Elementary School. In the purple are the general statements about the things we're doing at Manny Elementary School. Coming out of low performing status is not an option. It's something that we're going to require, that we're going to make happen if we have to. And if you look at the, in the dark, in the purple, those are general statements. In yellow are things that we're doing specifically at grade level to provide curriculum, support, both for English and math across the board and literacy across the board in our, all of our elementary schools, but in particular at Manny Elementary School. Because they're moving in the right direction, but they haven't come out of that low performing status. And, and y'all, they've, you know, this is not a new development. This is something we've been striving for, for several years now. And again, it's coming up. It's just not there yet. But we're not backing off. Middle school performance. All right, here we go. English, six, seven, and eight. Look at sixth grade English scores. Seventh grade reading. Eighth grade reading, highest in seven years. Bounced back on sixth grade math. Came up in seventh grade math. Bounced back in eighth grade math. So those drops last year were not permanent. And then eighth grade science. Again, new test, we did see a slight drop in that. But i- if you look also, look at the state number, it dropped 10 points. I feel we're, we're in a good place on that. Middle school highlights. Grade six reading, we're number 12 in the state in the top 10%. Grade six math, number 26 in the state, top 22%. Grade seven reading, number 12 in the state, top 10%. Grade seven math, number 13, top 11%. Eighth grade reading, if, if you see it in green, that's the top 5%. Eighth grade reading, number six in the state, top 5%. Eighth grade math, number 11, top 9%. Eighth grade science, even though that score was down, we're number four in the state in the top 3%. And if you look at all, and I, I want, let me go back. Let me remind you of the elementary school scores, okay? Again, our bar is set high. They're not where I want them to be. But if you look at all end of grade tests, that's all the tests in elementary and all the tests in middle school, we're number 27 in the state in the top 23% on all of those together. High school, it's getting better. Biology. Biology actually dropped two points. But again, new test, state dropped more. We'll get to the percentages, percentages in just a minute, and that'll make a little bit more sense. English 2, went down eight tenths of a point in English 2. Math 1. Math 1 dropped six points. Three points at the state level. Math 3, all-time high score. This is, math 3 is essentially, it's hard, it's not a junior level course. It's the third level of math. And act- actuality, a student could take math 3 in, in their sophomore year or even their freshman year if they took math 2 and math 3 in, in the fall and spring. It was, it used to be a junior course. It's not necessarily a junior course anymore. But it, it's, our numbers in math 3 just went through the roof this year. All right, remember the elementary bar graph? Look at the right-hand column. See that blue line? That's us. In biology, we're number eight in the state, top 7% new test. English 2, number 10 in the state, top 9%. Math 1, number nine in the state. Even though those scores dropped, we're still exceeding everything the state's doing. Math 3, we're number six in the state, top 5%. And when you look at the, the combined average of all of our four end-of-course exams in high school, we're number six in the state in the top 5%. Career and Technical Education. I, I, I hear Dr. Castillo say this all the time. She says butts in seats. Okay, that's what we're talking about here. The number of kids that we have enrolled. Now, keep in mind, when we talked about our ADM previously, our ADM is going down. So we, we don't have as many students to put in seats. But when you look at the numbers of, of kids that we've got enrolled at 2344, look back across there, that, that exceeds anything before 2021. We are getting kids enrolled in CTE programs. Industry credentials earned, again, last year, all-time high. We're at 2655 this year. Concentrators, that means completing pathways. Again, we, 246 last year. Fewer students, but we're still completing the pathways. But look at this. This is, this is telling. This is the percentage of students who are enrolled in those programs who complete a credential. And we've gone from 16% to 87% of our students. If they're in CTE, they're completing the pathway. Overall highlights. I thought this would be impactful. So I want you to watch this. I took last year's scores and I went in and said, if you look at last year and this year, where did we improve? In every one of those areas. In the Northeast, we're number one in biology, math 1, math 3, overall EOCs and number two in English 2. Number two in, in grade six reading, grade seven reading, grade seven math, grade eight math, grade eight science, and number three in grade eight reading, even though those scores aren't where we want them. So just like I did last year, where are we challenged? What areas are we going to be addressing? Grade three reading dropped 3.4 points. We're below the state average in grade four reading and grade three math. Grade seven reading dropped four tenths of a point. New science test, math 1, even though we're doing well, dropped biology, new test there. And English 2 was down nine tenths of a point. Those are the areas I'll report to you next year that we improve. Areas to celebrate. Enjoy this. Dare Learning Academy has its own model for alternate assessment for growth. They met all fi- all four of their goals. And that's, that's difficult. Now, keep in mind, that's difficult to do because typically in the Dare Learning Academy, you have students coming in and out of the program. So you don't get to hold students year in and year out. And they're still able to do this. I, I think their growth score dropped three points on theirs, but they set their score. So that, that's, that's still quite impressive. In our elementary schools. Grade four reading, Cape Patterson, increased 14 points. First Flight Elementary School, overall performance grade went up eight points. Increased their growth, growth score by 22 points. And fourth grade reading was up 26. Max Head Elementary, I was talking about Principal Flor a while ago. Overall school performance grade increased seven points. Overall math, nine points. And their fourth grade math was up 18. Kitty Hawk Elementary increased their school performance grade by two. Third grade reading went up 12 points. And Manny Elementary increased their school performance grade by two. Their growth score went up by 2.4 points. And their fifth grade reading was up seven. Middle schools. Cape Patterson Secondary, overall math, nine points. Overall reading, nine points. Grade eight reading, 27-point increase. First Flight Middle, overall math score, seven points. Their growth score went up 6.5 points. And their grade six reading went up 13. Those are huge numbers, y'all. It's not like one or two points here. You're, you're moving the needle a long way for a lot of kids, particularly with those growth scores. Manny Middle School, overall went up four. Grade six reading went up 13 and grade eight math went up 6.9. In our high schools, Cape Patterson Secondary increased their overall performance by seven points. Look at that growth score. It went up 17 points. And math 3 went up 10, biology went up 12. First Flight High School increased their growth score by six points. I mean, 12 points overall by six. And math 3 went up 15 points. Manny Middle High School, math 3 went up 11 points and they increased their ACT score over last year. Folks, you got people out there, they're doing a heck of a job. Our schools are performing at the top levels in the state of North Carolina. Are we at number one yet? No, but that's where we're going. I believe in what our people are doing. I believe in our students. I believe in the opportunities that we're offering those students, day in and day out. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. If not, I got some really good people behind me that probably know the answer.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I remember seeing something, I think it was last week, maybe it was two weeks ago, something local in the paper about test scores. So I went to DPI to take a look and all I could see was like the grades. Have they released all the data now?
Yes, sir.
And, and I know I say this every year, but it doesn't hurt to say it every year. We would prefer to have this data in June.
Yeah.
That way we can do our planning. But we have to wait until the growth data comes back from EVAAS, which usually can be anywhere from August to September, late September. And then the state board has to approve those scores. They did that two, 10 days ago. So that, that's, all the data that you find should be available this.
I, I appreciate the presentation you put together, but I like to see actual numbers and be able to break them down and compare this to that.
Yes, sir.
I prefer to have the data.
I hear you. I spend a lot of time on that.
Yes.
Spreadsheets everywhere.
Mr. Bassnight?
Yes, sir.
Have you began collecting data for creating a bar for the early college from across the state? How, how, how would you go about doing something like that? Because I know that this is going to be their first year. And in order to gauge performance there, we don't have much of anything to go on.
Well, and, and one of the challenges is going to be when they take certain tests. When they take biology, when they take English 2, when they take math 1, because there's only four tested subjects at the early college. So as they take that, those assessments, we'll start building that data. We, our bar is an A. That's, if you look currently, if you look currently at the Northeast region, eight of the top 10 schools in the Northeast region are early. Eight of the top 10 schools in the Northeast region are early colleges. There's one elementary school and First Flight High School. So we'll build that early college data as soon as we have the assessment data.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Years over time.
Hey, Steve.
Yes, sir.
How many school districts are in the Northeast region?
Usually, we, it gets gray when you get out near Edgecombe and Pitt. 16 roughly. Some of them participate in the Northeast and the Central and the Southeast and... Other questions?
Good job, Mr. Bassnight.
No, good job, Dare County Schools.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, which however, the board...
One more.
Okay, you've got another one?
Got one more.
Okay.
Just one thing I wanted to give you an update on. I know we talk about being audited all the time, so I wanted to make sure that I read you this, one of the more recent ones. If you remember, the, we, financial audit on financial statement funding, there was no budget amendment written for a school food service fund, which violated NCGS 115C 441. Rashad, our interim finance director, has received notice from NCDPI and the Department of Health and Human Services that the department agrees with the findings of the auditor's recommendation and based on corrective action plan at Dare County Schools. There is no further action required, and this finding is now closed. A review of Dare County Schools' response and/or evidence of corrective action for the identified finding determined that required actions were satisfied accordingly. This audit is now closed with respect to the programs of financial assistance administered by that department. So just notice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions on what Mr. Bassnight just recently said on the investigation? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next, we'll move to unfinished business. However, the board has none at this time, so we're going to go to the new business, and we'll start with the first reading that's proposed policy manual. Mr. Brow, would you like to give us an update?
Sure. We have four policies that we have for first reading. They're all pretty anodyne. There's nothing all that crazy. As I put in the minutes, we did have something on 7320 technology responsible use. Holly King had mentioned that there was something that had been struck from, or that was redlined, I guess, in the, in the policy that needed to be put back in, and it, just so that we can form with the actual agreement that the people have to sign, or students' parents have to sign to get the, you know, any school equipment, like Chromebooks, that sort of thing. We had another one on internet safety. All that is, is just revising some language to bring us more closely aligned with the general statutes. And the same thing with 4318, the use of wireless communication devices. And there were some questions as to the intent of that law. This falls into the House bill, what number was that? 959 banning phones in schools or usage of phones in schools and the restrictions on that. And what they meant as far as wireless devices and what the intent of that law was. And I know that Rachel over at Pointer School was doing a little follow-up, see if they could get ahold of somebody there and get some answers. The other one...
Mr. Brow, excuse me. On that one, there's a list of wireless communications devices that are, there's six listed. Can we add watches to that?
Well, that's the thing. It just says, that's the existing policy as it is now. We're looking at the statute. I think it pretty much put a blanket on any, any device that could, that could use. So it could be glasses, it could be watches. And so we're like, geez, you know, are we going to make kids take their watches off to get into class? Or, you know, what are we going to do? That is why Pointer School has reached out to the General Assembly to try to get some clarification. And then, once we have that, it'll come before us again, you know, and we can, we can address it at that time. 4320 is tobacco products. All that is, is just bringing things up to date to include vaping products and everything else, which actually kind of surprised me that that hadn't been done yet. 7720, employee political activities. There's nothing major there. It's just basically, we're trying to conform with, with language that's recommended by the NCSBA. So everyone take a look at it. We'll be voting next month for whether we're going to pass these or implement them or not. That's all I got.
Thanks, Mr. Brow. Any questions? Next item on new business is the nominee for the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors, as you all received in your packet, that I submitted my name in the packet, and Mr. Brow, Mr. Whitaker brought up that, to bring it to the board for a vote. So we're at the point that I need a motion on the floor to allow me to be on the Board of Directors for North Carolina School Board Association.
Could you tell us a little bit about the board and just in what the responsibilities and duties would be and...
Responsibility and the duties is basically, is coming up with the agenda, and Rachel, you can chime in anytime, because she's been in a little bit longer than I have, is coming up with the, the conference is the biggest portion of it, of holding classes and doing presentations at the conference.
So you're part of the planning and all of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When does that nomination due?
October 1st. So we have a motion on the floor to allow me to put my name in the app for, be on the Board of Directors for, and which, just because I put my name in there, does not mean I get the position. It is voted on by the current board.
I'll make the motion, David.
I have a motion, Mr. Brow.
Second.
Second. Mr. Bateman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? No nays. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our new assistant superintendent, Ms. Bro. Talking to us about the good old calendar.
The good old calendar. Started this year off with a bang, with a hurricane, literally, or a tropical storm, I guess. So because of that, we now have three calendars that we are moving towards approval, or for you to consider and approve tonight. So the first one is, I'll start with a traditional calendar. We had one staff weather day, and that was on August 21st. And the really important thing that I think that with all of these calendars is, in the past, when we have to, when we have a weather day or something like that, when there are students in the building, it's different, because those are remote, you can use remote days for that. When it's, there's not students in the building, we have to have 215 workdays for staff. And so when we break into our allotment that we have for workdays, we have to add them somewhere. Okay? So because we have to have 215 staff workdays. And so with the traditional calendar, we've added one, so we had, we had one staff weather day on August 21st, so we've added an optional workday towards, to the end of the year. And so that will be on June 11th. So originally, our workdays ended on June 10th, and they will now end on June 11th for the traditional calendar. For Hatteras, they are a unique being, just like they are right now with the bridge. But, so they had three weather closure days for the storm, which means that we have to add three days to the end of the year for the Hatteras staff, for Hatteras Elementary and Hatteras Secondary. So that will put them having workdays until through June 15th, which is the Monday. And so it's, we were hoping that we would only have to do two, but we had to do three. And so it puts us into June 15th. And then we also had one student weather day, which was the first day of school that we turned into a required workday. And so we just use, we use, we have five days that we can use, and so we used one of those for that day. And then the early college is the third calendar. So we had two remote learning days for the early college, because students were in session. It's different. And so we had two remote learning days, so they now have three left that they can use throughout the year. And then we had to do one weather closure day for students, and so that goes into their closure days. And so those are the big differences. There's not any difference for them as far as adding days onto the year, because the students were in session. But, so we are now functioning off of three academic calendars for Dare County Schools. So it's going to be fun to calculate it all. Are there any questions from the board?
Just seems like another. I remember back in the day, we started and started and started, so...
That's right. You've got to keep plugging along.
If we have any questions for Ms. Bro, do I have a motion on the floor to accept the calendars that's been presented? A motion by Mr. Payne? Second by Mr. Bright? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Looks like we've got some new calendars. Thank you. Next, on the item on the agenda is the MOU between Dare County Schools and the Dare County Education Foundation. And before we start with that, I would like to say that Ms. Christie is on her way. She didn't know if she was going to be here or not, but she has a sick child that she was taking care of. And Ms. Susan, the chair for DEF, is out of the country. So, but hopefully, Ms. Christie will walk in as we discuss this.
She was here.
She was here earlier, but she, I think she's on the way to a medical facility with her child.
Yes.
She won't be here tonight.
Okay. So with that being said, I just wanted to explain to everyone why we don't have representation here from DEF, but this is just, you know, a discussion for our board. You all received the Dare Education Foundation copy of the MOU, and then you've also seen what the committee of the Agenda Packet Committee read and looked over and sent some information to Ms. Hitch to come up with the proposal from Dare County Schools. And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Hitch.
Sure. Thank you. So the Dare Education Foundation provided a draft MOU, and in that MOU, they made some adjustments to what the previous MOU had been. Namely, 1A2 on your proposal was an adjustment proposed by them that board members will, Dare Education Foundation board members would integrate as necessary with BOE teams on issues associated with or similar to the DEF mission. And our version of that just makes clear, we've accepted that, but there was some later discussion about making sure that the Dare Education Foundation members that were following state law, federal policy, things like that, just on pieces of, if you're going to enter a contract that involves integration with students, for example, there's the Jessica Lunsford Act, which means anybody who's working with students has to pass some kind of criminal background, the sex offender registry checks and things like that. So not intending to add any difficulty for DEF, but just making sure that we're covered from that perspective. They also added that they would, they would get a calendar of back-to-school events for each school. No problem with that, because that would be public record anyway, and we produce that to lots of parents. And that there'd be an opportunity for them to distribute information using some of our platforms. The biggest piece of what you see in the MOU that's amended some, both by the Dare Education Foundation proposal and by what we were looking at, is the housing relationship. So with your materials, there was also the release of an, of a Dare, the housing position by Dare Education Foundation, and that was adopted at the end of July. And they wanted to know, everyone to know that they strongly supported Dare County's efforts to increase affordable housing opportunities for residents, especially teachers working in Dare County. The Dare Education Foundation currently operates the 36 apartments in the Kill Devil Hills and the Buxton locations in cooperation with the school system to try to provide affordable housing to teachers. As a small nonprofit, they have a single full-time employee. The DEF is unable to undertake new housing projects at this time. So DEF has basically taken a formal position. They're not looking to undergo additional housing projects to manage on behalf of the school system. The foundation is not seeking to develop new properties, and they, you all can read what they put out as their position on housing. So not surprisingly, the MOU talked about a couple of things. And these are things that the board should think about as you consider whether or not you want to approve the amendments that they proposed, in addition to the things that I've cited. So one of them is, there was an addition of a provision on tenant prioritization. So the DEF is looking for the school system to kind of establish availability priorities when it comes to the teacher housing. Should it be people who don't currently have housing, people versus people who may be staying over for multiple additional years in housing, assignments and wait lists. We've already been managing, it's my understanding, the waitlist piece of it as well. So for both Run Hill Ridge and Buxton is what they're looking for. They also want us to coordinate dual lodging opportunities, so where it would be possible for teachers to live together as roommates. And they're looking for us to, if they want to share a single unit. So all DEF-operated housing units are two-bedroom, two-bathroom units. So what they're saying is, if you have a single teacher who's willing to have another single teacher as a roommate, we could coordinate dual lodging on that. They've built that into this provision, but that's discretionary on your part, whether you all want to have that kind of responsibility in the housing piece of it. The next big part, that's a difference, I think, is the proposal that, once we would establish the tenant prioritization, that DEF would coordinate the tenant assignments with the property management company. So DEF's looking to have a property management company that will act on its behalf to conduct any kind of background checks, manage security deposits, enforcing lease issues, collecting rents, ensuring tenant bill payments, and managing tenant transitions when a lease concludes. The tenants would establish auto pay accounts directly with the property management company for all lease monetary issues, like the security deposits, rent bills, and any maintenance. Again, that's up to the board, whether or not that's something you're interested in doing, or whether that's something you want to reject as a proposal from Dare Education Foundation. They also added a provision that talks about the school system in coordination with Dare, with Dare County, performing grounds maintenance. We've rejected that. So essentially, what I understand is that we don't want responsibility for the grounds maintenance. So my edits to there specifically removes that. That's one piece that I knew for sure, that we'd been, we'd been on, of the position that we didn't want to take that on. They added a provision in the property insurance that says it maintains its own property insurance. It applies to all of their property that's owned by DEF at both complexes, in addition to DEF activities or office space in use on any Dare County Schools facility. So they are insuring themselves on that, which is wonderful. And then, that was pretty much their amendments. We added, my office added some additional amendments. When you look at what is called 91225, third version of a red line on this. And so we added that the agreement would begin on October 15th, to give you guys time to come back, even at your next meeting, if you wish, and, and look at whether or not, look at where you are on that. So we can start that anytime we want, if that timeline is not acceptable to the board. We put in here that there would be six-month updates, that we would get an update in April and October from DEF on, like kind of a financial overview of the programs and the housing. Particularly interested, I think, in the property management aspect of things. How is that going? We put in there about the, who owns what as of when the agreement ends up being enforced We said that DEF would secure a third party to perform grounds maintenance on the lawn care. We basically said unless there's another timeline that comes in a different provision that the agreement can be terminated. So we've added some qualifying language on that. And then we added some general terms that... And then we added some general terms that had to do with liability and indemnification, compliance with laws, who was going to conduct background checks. We basically added that at, at the school system request, Dare Education Foundation shall require employees who will enter our properties in the performance of this agreement to a criminal background check. So we're not sending, um, we're requiring DEF to be willing to have background checks on people that we're sending into homes or into schools for whatever that may be. Um, obviously non-discrimination, what would happen, that there's no agreement transfer. This, with the entities as they exist or who's agreeing to this. If something, if Dare Education Foundation became a different entity, there's no assignment of this agreement. Um, and that this is the entire agreement. And then we put the piece in about Jessica Lunsford, just making sure that we're checking, you know, making sure people are, we don't have any reason to have any issues with people that are coming on the property or working with the kids. So those are the amendments we proposed. Where you are in this process is we've got a proposal from the Educa, Dare Education Foundation. These are the proposed amendments. I'm not sure where you want to be on this this evening. You have some options. It's to the pleasure of the board. You can take a look at this and say, we want to send this back to the Dare Education Foundation as our response to their draft. Um, and I would look for a motion that y'all would approve this draft for return to Dare Education Foundation. You can vote on this draft and say, we're ready to sign this agreement if they're ready to sign it. You all have at your, at your leisure, whatever you wish to do with this proposal.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I, uh, section 3B, the tenant prioritization.
Yes.
Okay, you mentioned that a few moments ago in regards to if it's up to our discretion, whether or not we want to continue managing that piece. I think an important person to ask would be the one managing that piece. And I believe he's in the room. I don't know if it's, we can ask him?
It's certainly up to the board. We've had other questions for other administrators and directors.
If you can, Mr. Adams.
Yeah. Ian, you knew when you showed up. And I will say just as some background that we have been, Ian's been in consultation on some of this, but it certainly his concerns are important.
I haven't looked over a lot of the red lines, at least the latest one that came out of Pointers Pool. But as for the management of placement, I think that is something that we need to retain as a district so we can put who we think should go in there. And, you know, originally it was needs of the district. Uh, historically, since I've been here, I've been going chronologically. But, you know, that's another story in itself, and I think it serves. We've had discussions between Mr. Bassnight and Ms. Sproul. And certain topics did arise, but I think it is great for us to retain that ability to place our teachers in teacher housing.
So you have like a system, pretty much, ready to go?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Comfortable with it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think uh, in four years I've been doing this, I've called in Steve twice, maybe. Uh, for, you know, since I'm acting on his behalf. So yeah, let's call Steve. So yes, very comfortable with the, and I've turned over every single apartment in all 36 units, so at least once. Moving people through there pretty quickly. What's that? Yeah.
Any other questions from board members? How would you wish to?
Uh, I do have another question. You had mentioned something about uh DEF not being interested in property management, so, or, or something along those lines?
Not taking on additional property projects, but I read that from what they've provided to us and that's in your packet that is their position statement. So if you look on Assembly, there's a document.
They did create a, a new mission statement on behalf of their whole new board. And part of their mission, mission statement is to not follow up on building new housing developments in the future.
Okay, so there's, any thoughts of expanding Run Hill Ridge are now dead?
I cannot say, uh, Mr. Brower is dead, but currently right now with organizing their new board, they're really looking into, to revisit that.
Okay, so then that, that's where they are as far as the length of this agreement?
Yes, sir.
Which is what?
I think.
It can be two years. Uh, you can set the term of it, but we've set them for, in the past for two years. And I can speak to that if you don't mind, Ms. Brower. It, one of the things they say in their um position on housing is that they believe the arrangement would allow, um, that Dare Education Foundation has developed potential expansion, expansion plans at Run Hill Ridge complex should funding become available to support additional apartments, but it's not seeking to develop new process, new properties outside of ongoing expansion planning at Run Hill Ridge.
Yes, so Run Hill Ridge is kind of still alive, just based on what they've done.
Based on their position statement. So they, yes.
I, I get it, yeah. Thank you.
No problem, sir.
Mr. Bassnight, are the funds still available that were for Run Hill Ridge to build?
Are you referring to the commissioners?
Yes.
Um, that would be a commissioner's question.
Okay.
So with the pleasure of the board, would you like to accept the current MOU to present back to DEF?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Hold on one second, before, for clarity on my part, before we finalize it to send back to DEF, I want to make sure the piece that, that Ian is proposing either be amended or what we do, that I have an understanding of that. So Ian, what I would suggest is that you want us to send it back to DEF, making sure that we retain the place, the assignment authority under the draft agreement.
Already in there.
It, it is, it is in there, and Ian brought, I don't know if Ian had some concerns about that, or he was just encouraging you to keep that?
It's in, it's in there now.
So it had, there's a, it's interesting because the agreement talks about, the, the proposal talks about, we make the prioritization. So there's, let's, if you turn to the um redlined agreement.
I think I see what you're getting at. We prioritize, but they still place.
Right, so that, that's the piece of it. So if you look at the agreement, it talks about the prioritization, tenant prioritization, which is 3B. So Dare County Schools establishes priority for tenant availability, assignments, and a waitlist. So we establish the, the prioritization. If you look at C, once we establish the prioritization, the agreement calls for DEF to coordinate the tenant assignments with its property management company. And so I think that leaves a little bit of uncertainty because it doesn't necessarily speak to who is, we are prioritizing. They're going to coordinate assignments. There could be more clarity, I think, on who is actually deciding upon the assignments. Is that what you're suggesting, Ian?
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy to do that if the board wants me to make it expressly clear in here that the board retains the assignment authority.
Prioritize list.
Following the prioritize list. So we will create the prioritizations, and then we will retain authority over the assignments if that's what the board desires. I can amend the agreement to that.
Make motion to amend and send back?
Yes, that's fine.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Bateman, second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? This is based on the, the changes of the MOU for Ms. Hitch and Pointers Pool to make. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, Ms. Hitch.
Thank you.
Now, with that being said, are you going, once you made this, make those changes, are we going to send it to DEF? Or are you going to bring it back to the board?
I, I would send it on to DEF.
I would too, but I just want to make sure.
With those changes.
Make sure the board is aware of, of that. Once the changes are made, we're going to present it to DEF. Okay.
Um, what I'll do is when I send it, when I send it to DEF with that change, I'll, I'll send a copy to David so it can be distributed. You can see the amendment, and I'll redline that so you'll see the language I've added based on your proposal for amendment.
Thank you, ma'am. This concludes our business portion of the meeting. So now I will open the floor for comments from the board, student advisors, and our superintendent. And Ms. Cook, your first one on the list.
I don't want to shout.
You're fine.
Um, first, I wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to be a student advisor on the board. Is it, okay. Yes, I wanted to thank you guys um for this opportunity. I'm very excited to see um what all we improve together in collaboration. Um, congratulations to Mr. Bassnight and all of Dare County Schools for all of the growth that we've shown. Um, I'm also looking forward to how we continue to improve that and keep those statistics high. Um, and Ms. Fock isn't here anymore, but I am very touched by that, and I hope that everyone agrees that it's such an incredible project, and I'm excited to see where that goes as well.
Um, as a student at Manio High School, I know that the students who may not think they excel academically um and are interested really just sitting in a classroom. Um, I know that the boat building and the CTE um focuses now in classrooms. I know that they really appreciate it, and it's fun to have something outside of school to look forward to and something that they're really interested in, you know, going further in life and maybe having that as their job one day. I know that having that in school, um, really, they love it. So, yeah, I think that's a good opportunity for them. And also thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to everything.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm really excited to see the growth we show in the district. I'm excited to go back to first place next year, hopefully. And also I think the everyone's playground idea is very special, and it touched me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bright?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to welcome the student advisors. Um, one of my favorite parts of these meetings is when you guys present what's going on in your schools, and I really appreciate it um to our Hatteras cohort also. Um, the growth numbers were really impressive. Mr. Superintendent, thank you very much for standing on top of that. And please thank your staff for all the hard work in making this happen because it's not a one-person deal here, and we realize that. Finally, um, I had a chance to tour the schoolie, school bus in Hatteras. Um, I've been asked to consult on some electrical installations there, so I'll be doing that and meeting with the students on Thursday, and I'm really excited about that. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Mr. Bateman?
I'll try not to be too long. Uh, kind of to echo what uh, Mr. Bright said, you know, welcome to the new student advisors. Happy to have y'all here. It's going to be a fun year. I thought about using the term that I used last year when I said hello to the student advisors, but I'm, I think Mr. Bassnight moved to strike what I said, so I don't think I'm going to go there. Uh, all the, the Teacher of the Year for the district and everything like that, the Principal of the Year, Ms. Kelly Flora and everything. Congratulations to them. Congratulations to Ms. Castillo. Did I say that right? Okay, good. I practiced that for a weekend after I met your husband. Doctor, doctor. Man, I knew I was going to mess one part of it up. Never fails. Um, I want to shout out, I've done this before, but I want to shout out to Ms. Shannon Brinkley at First Flight Middle School. She does, she did the Starbucks coffee shop deal over there, and I sat in and looked at some different books and everything. And she's always trying to find ways to use that media center over there at First Flight Middle School, and she's, does a phenomenal job. Uh, so I wanted to give her a shout out. Mr. Tyson walked me through First Flight High School not long ago. I'd never been all the way through it. I'd only ever seen the gym, the cafeteria, and places like that, so he walked me through, and it was a lot of fun. He's a great tour guide. If you get a chance to do a tour with uh, Mr. Tyson, it's a good time. Um, I've been over the early college numerous times just to say hello. I pop in during lunch a couple of times and whatnot, and uh, Cassie Mount is doing a bang-up job over there. Kids are having fun. It seems like everything's flowing really well over there. So again, if I, my office is, I mean, heck, my office is right down from where Barry works too, but I walk, I'll walk over there sometimes. And that brings me to a gentleman that I guess has been, he's been kind of a jack-of-all-trades for them here lately. His name is Mr. Scott Shucker? Shu- Schuker? Schuker! I messed that up too. Um, he's been doing, he's been driving the bus. He's been, I guess, bringing the food to, back and forth for lunchtime, and he's been doing some custodial jobs. And uh, Ms. Mount was really singing his praises to me when I was over there not long ago, and um, that was, uh, wanted to give him a little special nod tonight from all of us. Went to the Marlin Bowl. That was a good time. The Marlin Bowl, I'll tell you what, that student section at First Flight High School was intense. I mean, they were, I had my, I had a Manio hat on backwards, and I had my chains on, and, I mean, they were, they were razzing me pretty good, but I tried to act like it didn't bother me. I thought they were talking, I was standing right next to uh, Ron. I thought they might have been talking to him for a minute, but, um. Couple of things, something that we have mentioned, or that I have mentioned, I guess I should say, that I've emailed a couple of times is about creating a recruitment and retention subgroup. One of the things that was mentioned to me in return was get our student advisors in place. They're in place. So I'd, I'd like to get to work on that because one of the things I'm very passionate about is if we got them here, let's keep them here. And if we need to get them here, let's get them here. Uh, Mr. Bassnight, could you do me a favor?
Please.
Do you want me to answer that now or wait till you ask? Yeah, I, I, I think, under advice, I'm going to wait for the question.
Okay, wait for the question. There we go. Uh, the field house at Manio High School.
Yes, sir.
Where, where are we with that exactly?
Actually, we just had a meeting. Uh, Ian, can, can you come back up? We just had a meeting.
Hold on a second. Let me just stop, stop for a second because this is board member commentary. If you want information, reports, action, or whatever, you have to wait to the actual business meeting. Sorry about that.
Okay, fair enough. Um, I know, but a lot of us, Representative Kidwell's going to be here tomorrow, correct? We're going to get to show him some of the cool stuff that we do around here, so I'm really looking forward to that. And um, I want to say just anyone that wants to call me, I encourage the action. I've had some phone calls over the last couple of months. Uh, I, I want you to, I don't care if you're a student, a teacher, concerned uh, citizen, family member of a student, parents, whatever. 252-256-3252. Please call me. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Mr. Payne?
Student advisors, welcome. Long meeting tonight. You get to see the legal side, the business side, and the excitement side. Typically, we don't go this long, but uh, I understand you guys still have some homework to do, right? As they all shake their head, yes, that's good. Welcome. Glad to have you here. Uh, the Marlin Bowl, uh, compare that to Duke and Carolina basketball. Pretty, pretty even. It's 11-11, which I think is amazing. Uh, and, and great crowd at the First Flight that night. Sold out. Tons of people there. Ditto on everything Mr. Bright said. Same thing from a counterpart here. Um, numbers are looking good, Mr. Bassnight. Thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Castillo, you and I've got a little work to do. That's, duh, well, I said, I told you that. Dr. Castillo, um, but it's exciting what we're doing at CTE. It's, it's, it's amazing. Uh, it's amazing. So um, got to visit uh, four schools. The first day of school, I was running around. First day of school was a lot of fun. Everybody's excited. Um, and Mr. Tyson did a good job, yes. And hats off to Kelly Flora. Uh, visited her school with uh, Lisa Lloyd last Friday. We had a great tour. And, and just some good, good things happening there. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Lloyd?
Again, welcome to all of our student advisors. This is so exciting. I think y'all are the highlight each month when we have our meetings, so good luck, and thank you for all the energy and enthusiasm that you bring. Um, first of all, I had a great summer. I don't know about everybody else, but I got a new grandbaby. It was super exciting. So now I have five grandsons. But the best thing was getting back to school. I went to the First Flight Open House. And Mr. Tyson, he does a wonderful job getting you in there and showing you things and introducing you to teachers and making some new connections. I'm meeting with Ms. Brinkley this week with uh, the librarian at First Flight Middle. We're working on a Veterans Day project, and I'm really excited about that. She utilizes that library beyond anything I've seen, so I really appreciate that with her. Um, I toured, like Mr. Payne said, Nags Head Elementary, and of course, that was fun. There's something special about elementary school principals that just bring that enthusiasm to the tour. Um, and I loved, she did a wall of quotes that she had her teachers paint that have diff, and she brought them, all the canvases and the paint, and they put their favorite quotes on the wall, and it's there for the students and the staff to see, which I thought was really inspirational, as well as their super special friend in the third grade, Vinnie, who is the therapy dog there. Got to meet him. He was pretty cool to see him in there and very friendly. Um, one other, couple other things I want to mention. If you don't read The Nighthawk, this thing is awesome. This thing is, I was enjoying all the senior stories in there. I saw a story about Mr. Brower's daughter in there, and her musical talents, which I knew she had, but to read it from her peers' perspective is always nice, too. So I encourage everyone to pick that up if you can. Uh, and then, from our last, I save newspapers. I'm like my mom. I'm like an old lady, but Emerson Mann, our last board, a student advisor, was in the paper this summer, and of course, I look at it, and I'm like, holy smokes, I know that kid. And to see what he's doing, the initiative that he is putting forward to go to Costa Rica and start this, um, well, what it, what it is, is, um, a foundation that he's working with the community foundation to get surfboards in the hands of the students and the children there who may not have the opportunity that he has or other kids have. And he is redoing surfboards, and then just going to, they're, I've given him some money. He's established this with the foundation to raise money for that, and I think that's pretty awesome. And so that's, that's what our students are doing, and that's what I like to come back and see. And then, one more thing, I'm sorry, I think Justin topped me, but the VFW has a scholarship opportunity for seniors, and I really like to, it's, um, Voice of Democracy is for the high school students. If you want any information about that, please let me know, or you can go online to the VFW local post is ten ninety-five zero, and they will give you all the information. It's a cool opportunity. If you win the national prize, it's thirty-five thousand dollars. Everybody that enters, I believe, gets a thousand dollars, and then the local national prize is five thousand dollars for the middle school age group. So, some great opportunities out there for our students. Mr. Bassnight, thank you for your presentation. I loved seeing the scores. Like you said, it may not be exactly what you want, but to see improvements, that's what we're striving for, and it's going to get better and better. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Mr. Wicker?
Just ditto's to everything that's been set up to this point. And, uh, one thing I wanted to bring up was the town of Manio has been having some problems at our Wengena pump station, and we've been pulling out vapes, and it's been, uh, I just wanted to bring that up and see, uh, we've pulled out, uh, eight of them in the last couple months, last six months, and having to replace motors and stuff. Wengena's pump station is right there at the end of Manio High School. So I just wanted to see if we can take a look at that maybe, and I know we're doing work on the sewer system for the, um, fieldhouse, so maybe we can talk about that later sometime, too.
Ending on an exciting subject. Mr. Brower?
Um, yeah, ditto for everything that's been set up to this point. I'm really looking forward to working with our student advisors. And, yeah, the, uh, the Marlin Bowl was a blast, uh, even though, uh, Justin almost got us, you know, uh, thrown out of there. But also, also got to see, uh, Manio's home opener and see the band's new uniforms there. That was really cool. And, uh, also got to see, uh, First Flight High School ladies golf, uh, match. Steve and I got to ride around doing that, and they, they were hoot. Really enjoyed it. Um, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Brower. Mr. Bassnight?
Um, I, I hope you know how excited I am for y'all. Um, I, I, you may not know tonight, but over time, the idea that we have students that sit in this room, that are involved in, in adult decision-making for our schools, to me, is one of the most impactful things that we've ever done. And I'm thrilled of, of the quality of people that we've got in those positions. Um, I'm thrilled that you have the opportunity to do this, but I'm more thrilled about what you're going to get out of this. Um, and so I, again, I thank you for, for taking the chance and, and coming in and joining us. Um, I'm looking forward to what you get. I really am. Um, staff, the data, um, you, you're exactly right. This is not about one person. This isn't about Steve Bassnight. This is about Dare County Schools. This is about our staff that go to work every day to, to get to those results, and it's about our students that are working just as hard to, to meet those goals. Um, I can't say enough about where we are and the opportunities we have, and, and I, I'll go back. Our bar is high. We set it there, and our students and staff meet that bar every day, and I want to congratulate each of them for what they do, in their profession and in North Carolina, because I am, I'm so proud to have had an opportunity to work with this, this quality of a school system, and there are people all over the state that would give an arm and a leg to be where we are right now. So I greatly appreciate them. Um, last thing's this. My understanding is the bridge is still closed, um, over Oregon Island. So, uh, we've got some early college kids that we're going to have to come up with a plan on, uh, on what they're going to do. We'll be communicating with the parents just as quickly as we can, um, as soon as we have those plans in place. But, uh, been, been working on it the whole meeting, and I apologize to the board, but, um, haven't put the phone down too often, um, because we've been trying to, to help those kids out and, and get them home. Um, but we're going to, we're going to keep them safe, and we'll get those plans out just as quickly as we can. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Um, I too would like to welcome our student advisories.
Looking out there and seeing the smiling faces, all the energy that y'all have just shared on your first visit is unbelievable. I can just see what the next few months is going to be like. Um, to our staff, what amazing staff. Um, the presentation that Mr. Bassnight presented us today, as he says, we have a high bar, and we're getting there, and we're proving that we're going to be the best of the best, which is unbelievable. Also wanted to point out on some other staff members, you know, over the summer, there's a lot of work goes behind the scenes, and those facilities was ready to go with people that's behind the scenes, from our custodians, from our maintenance, to our cafeteria employees and beyond. Our central office personnel that works behind the scenes to make things go where they need to be in the right direction, so we wouldn't have so many hiccups. We can't help the weather. Weather is what it is, you know. But anything else that we have the power to do, our technology, everything that brings that first day of school, so we can have that smiling face coming in that building to see our administration, to see our staff. I just want to say thank you, staff, for having that to where we can have a wonderful start of the school year. We also have in the room tonight, another student. She's going through her administration degree, and if I could, Ms. Wilson, would you please stand?
Ms. Wilson is going through the ECU program for administration. Um, she emailed me about a week or so ago, and she said, Chairman Twitty, my first, uh, assignment is to interview the board chair. So we went through our interview last week, and part of her assignment was to be here tonight. So I certainly would want her to be recognized going through that hard work. She's working every day at Cape Harbor Elementary School, and still going through this amazing program that is offered, not only through ECU, but the College of Amity City State University. So, um, welcome, and I hope you enjoyed your first meeting tonight, to see how things go. So, um, uh, Mr. Payne reminded me about the Dare, um, program, um, for COA. Uh, it's, it's an awesome program, uh, Mr. Payne, and, uh, certainly, if you would like to make a little bit of comment on that.
Almost for three years, every meeting, I talk about the Dare Guarantee. Seniors, if you don't know what you're going to do next year, please look at COA, and get your prerequisites for a four-year college taken care of for free, and all your CTE, uh, courses also at CTE. Stay at home, get a part-time job, go to school for free. It's a good deal. Dare Guarantee. Thank you.
And, you know, all the recognition tonight, um, for the high quality of, I'm going to call her Dr. Shannon, instead of Castillo. We'll make it easier on, is, it's unbelievable of that. And, you know, Bruce being the Teacher of the Year for First Flight Middle School, some of you may or may not know. I know that over the last three years, he's been a real big part of our maintenance program for the summer program. Uh, he's come in and helped our maintenance department of maintaining the First Flight, um, complex, and so he's an outgoing young man in a lot of ways, not only just teaching, but he's willing to come back and work in the summertime to help our maintenance program. So, with that being said, do I have a motion on the floor to adjourn? A motion by Mr. Payne. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Brower. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Y'all have a good night. Travel safe.